Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wierich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Thank you, Gail. And will you please lead us in the pledge?
Councilman Haney is all in.
I'm so sorry.
And I also, I didn't hear, was Councilmember Francina present?
I'm present.
Oh, thank you. I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
No.
Now.
Now we do the pledge.
Just sat down.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. May we have an approval of the agenda? A motion?
Yeah, so moved. Are we going to handle the one request there and continuing when we get there?
I would recommend handling it as you approve the agenda, just so it's taken care of up front.
Okay.
Quick question. Out of the closed session, Matt, did you report anything? I don't think I ever heard anything.
Ah, no. Thank you, Councilmember Blatz. The city council met in closed session to consider the water litigation and took no reportable action. Thank you.
So do we want to go ahead and remove the item number six from the agenda at this time?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Second.
And maybe for the members of the public, we should say what that is, in case any, we should describe what item six is, in case someone here is waiting to speak. It's the Earth Friendly Management.
And why are we pulling it?
Because we want to, we need some, we discovered some flaws and we need more, we need to study it more. That's why we're pulling it. And James did alert everyone yesterday that we were pulling it. He sent out an email. So this should not be a surprise.
So can we bring it back at the end of the meeting and put it in on a proper agenda?
Can we get to future agenda?
When the majority of us want to redo it again. Okay.
Yes, it will be in the future. And also, we figured, it's been a long night, starting at 5:30. There were, there were lots of reasons.
So are you seconding the motion?
Yes, I'm seconding. Unless the mayor already did.
All in favor, opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to presentations, and so I'm going to hand this off to James. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for handing it off. Normally, the mayor does these, but since we're down here, I'll take, I'll take on duties here. So I think the public has probably heard, and the city council's heard, about a fire on July 30th here outside of the, between the art center and the park. And if you haven't heard about it, the reason you probably didn't is because it was stopped and put out very quickly by one of our own police officers, Deputy Ramon Casas. And so we wanted to thank him for his actions here tonight at this meeting. We wanted to present him with a commendation and one of our centennial coins. And so we are going to do that tonight, but to do that, I want to hand it off to Chief Rivera, who's going to say some, some words. So with that, Chief.
Mayor Stix, councilmembers and staff, thank you very much for the opportunity coming for you to talk about this incident. The city has always been great recognizing folks for their actions to promote goodwill and to enhance our communities. And tonight is no different. But I'm very proud that we are recognizing one of my own deputies here. Deputy Ramon Casas is an 11-year veteran with the sheriff's office. He was assigned at the Ojai Police Station for approximately five and a half years. On the evening of July 30th, at about 10:50 PM, Deputy Casas was patrolling the city when he noticed a very large plume of smoke and hot embers that were rising up above several buildings near Libby Park. Deputy Casas quickly responded to the park and discovered a large palm tree that was fully engulfed in flames. He also saw a subject who was frantically waving his arms and kicking dirt on the palm tree. This subject tried to run into the flames to save some of his personal belongings, but Deputy Casas quickly grabbed him and pulled him to safety. The fire quickly grew and began to spread towards some adjacent homes and some commercial buildings. Deputy Casas grabbed his fire extinguisher from his patrol car and used it to slow the spread of the fire until fire department was able to arrive and extinguish the fire. There is no doubt, if it wasn't for Deputy Casas' sharp observations and quick response to action, that this fire would have quickly spread to the adjacent commercial and residential buildings, causing significant damage and endangering residents. Deputy Casas' actions also saved the subject who was near the fire from sustaining serious injuries by pulling him out of harm's way. I am very proud of Deputy Casas and the actions he took that night. I'm also very proud of the deputies who patrol our communities day in and day, every day and every night to ensure the safety of everyone in the Ojai Valley. A special thanks to Laura Bushman and Riley Brown. We took the photographs, I think they're, I don't know if they were going to show them, but they took photographs that were featured on the Ojai Valley News. One of the photographs was a picture, a silhouette of Deputy Casas holding the fire extinguisher, racing over toward the fire to slow the spread of that fire. So thank you very much for your time. I'm very grateful for the, for the acknowledgement of the deputy. Thank you.
And with, with that, this, I have a, here a City of Ojai commendation, where the city council commends and thanks Deputy Casas for his calm bravery and quick response in preventing the fire on July 30th, 2021. So I'm going to give that to Deputy Casas. Thanks. Thank you. And we have here a very limited edition. We only had a few of these made for special occasions like today. One of our centennial coins that includes our special 100th anniversary logo on the backside. So we're also presenting that to you. And Deputy Casas will like to say a few words.
Just real quick, I'll make this real quick. Good evening. Just wanted to say that everything that we do here is 100% a team effort. It wasn't just me that night. It was a lot of the people that behind here in the tan and green as well. They worked with me on a nightly basis as well as up here. And without their support, none of this could have happened. So I want to recognize each and every one of them as well.
Thank you again very much. It's been a pleasure working in the Ojai area for as long as I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Casas. And thank you so much for your serene bravery, beautiful phrase. And I'm just so grateful to you and all of you for taking care of us and keeping us safe.
Did I say one thing real quick?
Great story, too.
Everybody I talked to that witnessed what was happening there in, in, in real time, they, it was a close call. Thank you. You saved a really important part of our community. That's right next to the Ojai Art Center, the condos, our Libby Park. So your, your quick actions, I think, saved some of our heritage very, very, in a very real way. So thank you.
You're a hero. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, public communication. Gail, do we have any, any on Zoom?
The only person I have listed for Zoom is Bill Miley, and I believe he's there in person. So if he would like to speak on, oh, I think he wanted to speak on the consent calendar. So we have no one listed for public communications.
Okay, thank you, Gail. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, a motion to approve everything?
Mayor Stix, I have a quick question on item F. It'd be very quick if we could pull that.
Okay. Any other items? Okay.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Or nay? Yep.
Excuse me, who was the person who made the motion?
Councilman Haney made the motion.
Thank you.
Haney and Wierich.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. F?
Very quick question for the city attorney. There's a list of issues laid out here in terms of the planning commission to take up on the study assessment guidelines. I want to make sure that we're not exclusive to that list. Like if something occurs to me or other council members, they can, they're free to bring up in an open-ended way, issues within that overall framework. It's not limited to the issues named, in other words.
Absolutely. The list is the list to include for sure, but additional items could be added on top.
Okay, well, with that understanding, I move approval.
Okay, all in favor or opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I just got, thank you. I just got one public comment. Cindy Jones?
Thank you. I got that in a bit late. Since Agenda Number Six is off, Agenda Item Number Six has been taken off, I just want to just briefly talk about it. While I think the EFM proposal has mostly good practices and good goals, I think it's far overreaching and it could be much simpler. It appears to be a plan that was already implemented in the city of Malibu and other large cities. And it just looks like whoever did that just took in, cut and pasted and tried to make it appropriate for Ojai. And I have several questions about the proposal. And I know that you're going to bring it forward in the next meeting after all of you guys have had time to vet it. But in the meantime, I do have a question. Why were the notifications about that being taken off of the, the agenda only sent to members of the Green Coalition?
The city didn't send any notifications about it being taken off?
Well, somebody did, because they knew.
I can, I can answer in part, if I may. We, we, we sent the cancellation to the same people that we sent the announcement to. And we also posted the cancellation on, on Facebook and social media. We received information at the, at very, at very last minute, yesterday morning, that changed our perceptive on parts of it. And we felt it was better to continue it at a later date. But was there a problem?
I, I agree. It is better to go back and review some things, but I don't do social media. So I just happen to be a member of the Green Coalition, and I got the email. And so I alerted other people to it, because other people didn't know.
We tried to send it out to everyone we could think of that had been involved in, in the past. We sent out maybe 300 or 400 notices, not just, also the people that belong to a group known as Transition Ojai, you know, pesticide-free Ojai. We sent it to that group of people.
It's still not kind of the general public, is what I'm saying. And it, and it seems like the general public gets left out of a lot of things that are going on in the city. And kudos to Randy for earlier saying that we need more public participation in the Ojai Plan. I heard you earlier on Zoom talking about that. And we do, and we need younger people involved as well. So.
And just to clarify for you, it wasn't technically off the agenda until we just voted on it.
Right.
So that's why it's kind of confusing, too. Had we known as a council and been able to say it was taken off, I think as a city, we would have provided some notice. But we couldn't, because procedurally, it was put on the public agenda, which means it's only taken off if we vote on taking it off. So this was an interesting situation where the proponents of it, in the last minute, decided they were going to advocate for taking it off. So it wasn't really official. It was kind of a courtesy notice. So it's a little bit of slipping through the cracks on how things work, making the sausage. But unfortunately, yes, we should do better. We were very concerned about a number of people showing up. And, you know, we, it's always an unlucky situation where we have something like that happen and people want to speak about it. But thank you for showing up anyway.
Yeah, well, I, I wanted to make sure that I, I made my point clear that all of the community needs to be involved in these decision-making processes. And it seems like the Green Coalition is like, really embedded with the city council, to me. And it leaves out a large group of people. I happen to be a member of the Green Coalition, but I don't know how many members there are, but certainly not all of Ojai. And certainly not all of Ojai does Facebook. So just wanted to make that clear.
May I respond, Mayor Stix? All of Ojai can sign up for these notices. You know, we have an app now. It's so easy. And it's, people have to take responsibility because we have an excellent website. The information is there. We can't lead people by the hand, you know, to do the reading for them. So we make, we do, in fairness, we make every effort. Also, I want to make sure the public understands that this policy applies to city property only.
Yes.
It's not private property.
Yes.
Thank you.
I still think it's far overreaching, because it only starts here with the city. And then it'll go into our private properties.
Thank you, Cindy.
There, just one, just one comment. It's just bad optics, what took place. It's just bad optics. It sends the wrong message to the public, that there's a small group of individuals that are getting more information than the body of the whole, which is the whole community. No matter if the community belongs to Facebook or Twitter or all the other nonsense that's out there. But, but it's just bad optics. And we, we, we have to do better.
And we want to encourage everyone to sign up for the agenda that gets sent out via email. In fact, I get the agenda faster signing up through the city than I ever do from the city itself when I'm on the council. So I always get it first through our blast email, and then I get it directly from the city. But on this one, unless I'm mistaken, there would not have been any notice. If you had the app or signed up or anything, there was no, there would have been no notice on this. So I don't want to mislead anyone. There's nothing you could have signed up for. Someone just let the Green Coalition know, apparently, what they believed was going to get voted on in a meeting, which I don't think is how it probably should have gone, but it was kind of a courtesy so that people would know not to show up and make sure they were here for the next time when it does come up.
Thank you. Thanks, Cindy. All right, moving on to discussion items. Number two, the adoption of an ordinance to create a two-year pilot program for inclusion of tiny house regulations into the ADU section of the Ojai Municipal Code. James, may I have the staff report, please?
Yes, and this is the second reading, so it will, I'll give a brief staff report that will be very similar to the, the one last time. But for those who may have missed that, the planning commission had reviewed a, and recommended a movable tiny homes ordinance back on August 1st, 2018. On August 28th, 2018, the city council reviewed the ordinance as well, but chose not to adopt at that time. Earlier this year, when the city council discussed goals, one of the main goals, just like today's joint meeting with the PC, was potential housing options that could help address the city's need for housing stock. One of the potential programs identified at that time that, for return for council consideration, was the idea of a two-year limited pilot program for movable tiny homes. The city council voted to direct staff to bring forward that ordinance. That ordinance was brought forward at the last meeting and is here today for the second reading. And just to reiterate, the ordinance would be a two-year pilot program that would allow 10 permits for tiny homes, movable tiny homes, per year, that would result in 20 total tiny homes at the end of the two-year period. To be eligible, a movable tiny house must be an accessory building, meaning it's accessory to a principal dwelling unit on site, just like an ADU. And it treats tiny homes similar to ADUs in multiple ways. The movable tiny house must be licensed and registered with the DMV, must be built to ANSI standards, similar to an RV, must be towable or on a towable frame and designed not to move on its own power, must be an appropriate size to be movable on public highways, must have at least 150 square feet of first-floor living space, must include living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation areas, must be designed to look like a conventional building, and will be subject to the design review for that purpose. It's not like a, it won't, won't be able to look like a traditional RV. Must be sited behind the principal dwelling unit before the rear setback line. Must be placed on a permitted, permanent foundation with the wheels removed or with jacks to, to prevent movement. And must have an all-weather surface pedestrian path that will be provided from the street to the main entrance. It's also required to have at least 80 square feet of exterior decking and subject to the same utility requirements as, same utility requirements as accessory dwelling units. The ordinance also includes a prohibition on excessive movement, meaning the movable tiny homes can only be moved once a year. So they can only be moved on to a property once, once a year. There's a couple of questions that we received that, that we wanted to just answer for the council and the public. Some of them we answered maybe short or quickly last week. But one is the, the question we've received multiple times of, are these tiny homes going to count towards the city's RENA affordable housing numbers? The answer at this time is that we do not believe so, but it, but it is unclear if that's going to change or if HCD will, will make these count at some point. We also were asked to, if these tiny homes are built to the same building standards that the building code is built to. I don't know. It felt like my microphone cut out, but let me see. Does it work?
It's back now.
Okay. So to reiterate, these tiny homes are not built to our city building code standards. We had received questions about if that means that the fire hardening that the building, the city adopted in the building code standard, standards is applicable. It's not, because they're not built to the building code. They're built to ANSI standards. Also, the city's reach codes would not be applicable, because, again, that would be applied through building code, and these would not be subject to the building code. We also received some questions about, you know, how these would be, are, how these would be insured and how they would be, how they would be taxed. And in short, you know, that, the, the insurance question is a question each homeowner should talk to their insurance provider and determine how it will be treated. There is no standard answer for that at this time. And for taxes, they, these may be subject to reappraisal or may make somebody's property subject to reappraisal, reappraisal, depending on the circumstances. So that is something that property owners should consider before installing as well. So. But with that, I think that was the bulk of the questions. We were asked by council last meeting to look further into the affordability issue and whether the pad or the house itself can be required to be affordable. And so we have analyzed that. It was a legal analysis, so I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney for that discussion quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. So we took a look at whether the city can require movable tiny homes, the pads of both, to be maintained affordable, to limit the rental rate, the rental price. The answer is no, in short. But I'll, in a little bit fuller, as to the units themselves, that is, the person who rents the unit to live in it, they are exempt by state law from rent control because they will be newly built after February 1st, 1995. The, as to the, and that applies both to the rental of the unit itself. So if somebody just, a landowner rents the unit out, or if they rent the unit and the pad together, however the, the contract is structured, if it's a rent for the unit, that is exempt by state law from city's rental regulation. If it's the pad only, so this is the second category, where movable tiny house is owned by the movable tiny homeowner or the resident, and then they drive it onto a, onto land owned by someone else and pay them rent for the pad, that's a bit of a gray area. My best assessment is that a reviewing court is likely to conclude that the city could impose that, but it will likely be challenged, and it's uncertain, because the most analogous area of law is the traditional mobile homes. And for traditional mobile homes, any newly built space, that is newly built pad after February 1st, 1990, is barred by state law from being subject to rent control. Now, these movable tiny homes are not the same as traditional mobile homes. So there's a window, but it's a bit of a narrow window. And I'll caution the council that if there's interest in further assessing that, we'd be happy to do so and really, really drill down into that. But it, it, there is substantial risk of litigation there. There is an exception. The exception would be if the city, by contract through a development agreement or otherwise, were to grant special permission in return for required affordability. We see this with affordable housing projects that may come through in the future, where you get an extra 10 or 15 units in return for X amount being kept affordable. The same thing could be done with tiny houses, although it would be difficult to do so on a, on a one-off basis. That would make more sense in a tiny home village context, which is something a bit different than what's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, question?
Yeah, question?
The, the exemption from state law that you cited, that affords to all ADUs, not just tiny houses, is that correct?
The, yes, any ADU that is newly built after February 1st, 1995 is exempt from rent control. And period. And I'll note now, the city has no rent control right now. Rent control or rent stabilization, the city does not have that. If the city were to adopt it, which is a council choice, not on tonight's agenda, that could only apply to buildings built before February 1st, 1995. That's the Costa-Hawkins Act, which you may recall, there was a proposal on the last general election ballot to undo that that failed. But it's a, it's a topic of discussion in Sacramento.
Okay, let me, let me see if I understand that, okay. Your, what did you say the date was that rent control applies, could apply to, if we did go in that direction?
February 1st, 1995. A rental unit, a residential rental unit had to have existed before February 1st, 1995, for the city to have any power to regulate its rent.
And are you saying that we could never have any power to regulate the rent on ADUs, newly built ADUs?
Yes, because every ADU is built, by definition, after February 1st, 1995. With the possible exception, I will say, any newly built ADU out, an ADU that existed before that was converted? Maybe. The challenge, though, is, well, actually, the challenge point there is that single-family homes are also exempt from rent control. And ADUs are, ADUs are under single-family homes. So likely you're exempt, you're out of it two ways. The one point I will add that wasn't discussed in staff report, because it wasn't the question, but it's worth noting. There is some state control of residential rental rentals that does even apply to single-family homes, depending on how many, how many the homes the landowner owns. So that may apply, but the city would not have power to do it if the ADU or the tiny home is built after February 1st, 1995. And that's state law. We don't have a power to fix that, unless Sacramento does.
Unless the state fixes it, yeah. Okay, let me process that. Yeah, Randy?
I have, I have a couple of questions. The first one is the, we gave them a, it's, I'm missing the word here, but it'll come to me in a second. We gave them the status of an ADU, which then exempted them with that status from the high-fire zone construction practices. Am I correct, Matt or Jane?
It's, it's not, was it the ADU status that exempted them? It's the subjecting them to ANSI standards, which is essentially saying that they can be built like an RV.
And I'll add just one complexity to that. The current proposal is ANSI or NFPA, similar standards, but yeah, by, by allowing them to be built to standards equivalent to modern RVs, that exempted them from the building code.
Then if we did that, then why did we give them an ADU, an ADU standing? I think that's where I'm conflicted, is we created a gray area for them to be exempt from construction, standard construction practices in the, in the community. Yet, that's on one side of the construction part of it. And then we give them all of the other components of an ADU, which is are exempt from, you know, sewer connection fees and you know, solar and maybe Title 24, electrical. That's where I get a little lost here is we create, we created, we created a box. We put these in it. We gave them all types of status and all types of of breaks. And, and then what are we getting in return for that? That's, so that's, that's one of my concerns, just right up front. I'm letting the council know that's one of my biggest concerns is how we came about this entitlement, which in turns prevents us from doing some of the things that we want to do with constructing in a high-fire zone, which we all are in agreement with. That's pretty, that's a pretty big concern right now. The second thing is, I guess you touched on it with the taxes. So if a family of four moved into a tiny home and two of their children were going to school, could be three people, could be one child, doesn't matter. Are they going to be assessed the, the school tax that, that that goes along with that assessment on your, on your house? Am I correct?
No, so it'd be treated like an ADU. So the property owner, the owner of the parcel would pay their property tax. Adding the tiny home may potentially increase that property tax. But the person living in that tiny home would not be paying, you know, school bond or things like that. So.
So then the person who technically the
Hold on a second. I need to stop you right there. The, the current bonding schedule in the community facilities district that the district that took over Golden State Water includes that if you have two dwellings on the same property, you pay two taxes. So that may be true for school, but we, I don't, I, I cannot, I mean, like if you put, if you put an ADU on your property, you get double the mellow roost tax on the, the water bond.
Yeah. So the correct answer, I, I guess not to generalize. They're treated like ADUs. So if the ADU is subject to the tax, the movable tiny home is
So yeah, you may get another water bond. There may not be another school bond or
Right. Well, that's a different issue. But I'm glad you brought that up because that would be the same thing. So again, the individual that's, that's allowing this structure to be built on their property needs to be aware of these. So do we have a, have we prepared, are we going to prepare? Any form of a punch list that we hand out in the permitting or in the planning phase that acknowledges all of the issues that might be related to putting one of these? Someone used the term the other day, a portable matchbox. But, but it just, you know, are we going to do something like that so the public is aware?
I really, and I, I don't mean to interrupt you. I know, I know we're thinking on the same wavelength. That's why is that I'm very concerned that there's a lot of hidden fees and costs in this, and we're going to make it sound like this great proposal. We know the public has, has indicated that they, they have some interest in doing this. And I'm very concerned though, that somebody's going to roll one of these in their backyard, put a pad up and not realize all the extra expenses they're going to have. Because it's not clear whether they're exempt from sanitation or not. It's not clear whether they're exempt from these bonds. The taxes, the tax implications, not being able to move it for a year or do anything else. And the fact that they're not cheap. The building requirements are a little strange compared to regular other dwellings and ultimately it's, you know, they're, they're not inexpensive and the numbers as they pan out are not overly affordable. So it's just important that we make sure if people want to do this, that we don't end up with people who are trapped losing money by trying to help. And that's what I'm worried about. People with good intentions trying to put a, a tiny home in their backyard and, and go through all this process and find out the hard way that it's much more expensive. Which I do know specifically some people who went through that with ADUs and they went from 200 to 300 to 400,000, they ended up with a, you know, 900 square foot ADU. It's 400 grand. So.
This point of order, are we deliberating before we take public comment?
We're still asking questions, so. Any other questions for staff?
There was a, a simple question in there, I think, which is, have, have we prepared materials? You know, giving that information, the answer is no. Would we? Yes. If, if this is adopted, we would prepare a punch list and materials for the public.
Any other questions?
Oh, I just wanted to apologize because all the questions I asked were in the staff report. But of course, it's of interest to the public too. Yeah.
Gail, any public comments on Zoom on this item?
The only person I have signed up for a public comment is again, Bill Miley, but I believe he's there in person.
In person. Okay. All right. We have four public comments. Leslie Hess, Phil Miley, Larry. Larry, you, you need Feingold. Okay. It's tough, your handwriting. And, and then Dale Hanson.
Hello, my name is, for the record, Bill Miley. As you know, I favor modular houses and manufactured homes for accessory dwelling units. But in this case, if you all are going to adopt a two-year pilot ordinance for tiny houses, I have some comments and some positive suggestions. So let's assume it's adopted. Competition one, competition for tiny house pads to place your tiny house on is going to be really high. In my limited research on Craigslist, I found one in California at $750 a month. Two, regarding costs, what about using a pad at Lake Casitas? Casitas Recreation charges forty nights, forty dollars per night for a full hookup. And you only can stay there 14 days each month. Their snowbird program allows up to six months if available, and they charge forty nights, forty dollars per night, which is $1,200 a month. Three, new pads in Ojai with full hookups look like they would be very attractive to folks living elsewhere wanting to spend time in Ojai. Price per night is unknown. We don't know what it will be, but likely the market rate. Four, having a full hookup pad and buying and placing a tiny house on it and making it affordable does not seem possible unless the owner offers subsidized rent. Number five, to make a tiny house rentable for a family, probably no more than two people, the property owner is going to have to offer subsidy or agree to rent it at a low rent, not marketing. Six, and last, since the primary goal of adding more house units here in Ojai is to create workforce housing and affordable workforce housing, a cooperative program with city government is suggested. I've mentioned this before. The city helps the property owner buy the tiny house in exchange for an agreed affordable rent over a number of years, like 10 or more, after which the owner would buy the city out over a period of years. So in summary, full pads for rent will probably get us new residents. Maybe somebody wanted, some of them wanting to work here. And I see tiny houses or pads would provide family residence additional guest stays and would likely only help our workforce have subsidized for affordability. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Next we have Leslie Hess and then Larry and then Dale.
I still think the tiny, tiny house pads should be investigated further by the staff and that possibly the pads could be rent controlled. And if you could please direct staff to explore all options to make tiny home pads available to very low and extremely low income households and include that in the tiny pad ordinance. The tiny pads would help people with the highest need. And if you want to give them help, this is a good way to start. It's small, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Larry?
Thank you. It's Steingold, not Feingold. Close enough.
I got now, Steingold.
I think ADUs are interesting. It's a cross between a mobile home and RV and a house. I think they're good for possibly affordable housing as long as they go toward the ref fee. Is that what you said? The, the housing that we have to comply to? If it goes toward that, then fine. If it doesn't, then it's not going to be affordable. But my concern is parking. A family of four, two cars, three cars, who knows? Where are they going to park? Are they going to be, are we going to require off-street parking? Because if you have ADUs on drown, there's not going to be any space on drown. The fire marshal, I don't know what, not coming from here and don't know the rules and regulations regarding fire access. But does the fire marshal approve where the ADA, ADU goes? So that they can have access by the fire apparatus and personnel? Because lots of homes here have gates and walls and what have you. The metric that you're going to use for either extending the program or killing it two years from now. You should be started one and a half years from now. And the metric should be very specific. I mean, what, what are the, what are the metrics? Like they're definable, it's easy, it's simple, it's transparent. It's no big deal. Airbnb's, I understand, are not involved in the city, correct? Not permitted? Then if that, there should be a law that says nobody can use this ADU as an Airbnb or they have to remove the pad and remove the ADU, you lose it. There's no nonsense. There's nothing. Either you have a law that says no Airbnb and that's fine, but you got to pull the, the the mobile home goes, sorry, the ADU. But that's the big thing. But it's nice place if you can figure out that's where you're going to put grandma or you're going to put your son or somebody from college or they're coming home. And it may be great for workforce, but it really isn't a home. It's more like a, a shed with a toilet. I mean, we're either going to do it or do it right. I mean, permit more housing, but not in a commercial zone because you don't have much commercial here. And if you turn this town into all housing, you want to see prices go up through the roof, you ain't seen nothing yet. So that's, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Dale Hanson?
Thank you. I'm Dale Hanson. I live in the city of Ojai. I think my question or comment might have been handled already with, with what Randy Haney said. But I thought when the city manager was speaking about the tiny homes, that there was a comment made that, and maybe I'm mistaken, that they wouldn't be the same fire codes that are elsewhere. And since we may even have more fire hardening issues coming, I was just wondering, are they going to meet those fire hardening codes?
Thank you, Dale. Want to answer?
I could quickly answer that. Just, so these are, the ANSI standards apply to these or I think it's NFPA. Was, was the other one that we drafted it to, but the building code does not. So any fire hardening in the building code would not apply to these.
Thank you, James. Normally I would speak last. I'm going to use the mayor's authority tonight to speak first because I really want to make sure that we approach this in the right way and for the right reasons and that these homes benefit people who really need them. Limiting rents on tiny home pads is a great start in providing places to live for very low and extremely low income households. These are the folks who need the help the most. This is the point of the ordinance, isn't it? To provide homes to those who need the most? Mobile home pads and trailer pad rentals have been regulated for decades in other jurisdictions throughout the state. Though a maximum of 20 tiny home pads can be approved over a period of two years, the council has an opportunity to make 20 homes for very low and extremely low income people. Unlike stationary ADUs in Ojai where rents are unregulated, tiny homes are not mandated by the state and we have discretion. Come on, council, let's use our discretion to help those in need rather than feeding the Ojai gentrification machine that continues to push those of modest means out of our town. My support of tiny homes in Ojai is contingent on whether or not this council has the will to make this option within reach to very low and extremely low income people and to examine all options to do so before approving the ordinance, not after the fact. And I have a motion I definitely want to hear from the rest of council. So thank you.
Mayor? Could I ask for our city attorney and city manager to respond to find out if this is possible?
Yes, it's possible. It's a matter of policy choice. Where the council wants to put the policy choice. The council could choose to introduce the ordinance as proposed with modifications. And then second, separately decide to pursue affordability requirements for the pad rentals. Option one, option two, as proposed by the mayor, would be to tie the two together and move the ordinance forward contingent only upon making an affordable pad rental requirement, which would mean in tonight, the direction will be staff to go back and us to draft something for review by full council because obviously we don't have a rental regulation component drafted tonight. Option three would be to take no action at this time. It's possible. There's risk inherent in that choice. The risk is that the property rights advocates may seek to strike down the affordability requirement. As I noted in the staff report, the law is uncertain here. I can't guarantee the outcome. And I'm not revealing anything that anyone doesn't already know in this public statement, the law is uncertain on this. We'd be the first city in the state to try a affordable affordability requirement for tiny house pads, but that doesn't mean we won't succeed. It just means I can't guarantee we succeed. And there will be some additional cost and risk if somebody does file suit. The other thing that's worth bearing in mind as a practical challenge is that if the city council requires affordability upfront, tiny house owners and property owners will have to make the choice with full knowledge whether they do or do not want to install a pad. You can't, the city lacks the power to compel anyone to install a pad or to build a tiny house. So if the requirement is that the pad rentals, that any pad built that's not, on which the, the landowner does not install a tiny house themselves, can only be rented at an affordable rate, assuming we can get past the litigation risk and we can enforce that requirement, whether that will result, how many pads that will be then made available as affordable rental pads is a very open question because that'll be an individual property owner's choice. Again, not to say not to do it. It's not my choice. It's policy choice, but that's something to consider.
Right.
Thank you. As the bell tower goes off, that's the second time tonight. I'm landing on both. I'm getting lucky. I had a bird fly in my house today. I knew there was going to, I knew it was Norman. If we're talking about extremely low income individuals and the people that need it the most. The problem is we could force people, let's say hypothetically in a perfect world, that we could make the pad free. We could say you have to put a pad in and you're not allowed to charge any rent for the pad. But then the person has to bring their own tiny home. And if we're talking about individuals that are the most in need of housing, how are they ever going to do that? You can't finance these. They're expensive. They're not cheap. If they had the money to buy their own tiny home, I don't know if they qualify or would be in that most in need situation. The only way I can really, what it sounded a little bit like was that as if the city would be building 10 pads and then renting them out on some affordable level and letting people park there or something. I don't know. But I don't know how it makes logical sense that even if we had all the control in the world to keep the price of the pad in the backyard or a group of pads in the tiny home village low, how, you can't control if, if the rent, if the landlord is the one who brings in the tiny home, they can set whatever rent they want. We can't control it at all. That's what I'm hearing, Mr. Summers, correct? There's no control we have over the actual rent of the home, just the rent of the pad.
Correct.
And yeah, we don't really, we know, under any of these circumstances, the only way to have any old, full control over keeping it affordable is if the party that's living in it brings their own tiny home. But then we're asking them to, to be able to afford their own tiny home, which has financing issues, which has, you know, I mean, it's, it doesn't the cost doesn't, the, the value doesn't go up like a normal home. It's probably going to go down more like an RV. I mean, these are very bad economic situations to force someone into if we're trying to get them out of a, you know, out of super low income or very low income or whatever the heck it is. So I just, it seems like that, that sounds great, but I don't know how we could ever actually make it happen.
May I comment?
I, I think I was next.
Bill, Randy, and then Susan?
Yeah, there are a couple of things, Mayor Stig, that I'm, I'm a little confused about and trying to understand. To Ryan's point, unless we are subsidizing construction, there has to be a rate of return you know, on the cost of putting the pad in. All right. And I think, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure where the, the, all the affordability standards are based on housing as a whole right now in terms of a percentage of income. And so I don't know how you I don't know how you break out the, the cost of the pad itself in terms of that. itself in terms of that. I, I have long been of the opinion that it's maybe better to think about an approach to rent sta, using rent stabilization rather than rent control as an approach where you limit the amount of, of rent increases per year. I think that's, that doesn't have the, the risk of reduce, of eliminating the, the rate of return, which means you get no capital invested in the purpose that you are hoping for. So I'm, I'm not sure how this implements, you know, in, in real time. The other point I think, I, am I hearing that we're talking about rental? So if a property owner wanted to put in a, a pad for a member of their family or for them to move into, it wouldn't apply to them. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, and to answer.
Wouldn't apply to an owner occupied or a, a member of household occupied situation.
Sure, yeah, right.
Wouldn't apply to that at all.
Ideally, you're not charging your kids and absorbing an amount of rent.
So I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand where the metric would come from.
Well, that's why.
That's all the available metrics are for housing overall.
And my, my request is that we direct staff to look, to answer those questions. Because of course, you know, tiny homes are very new, you know, for all of us.
I would be more interested in saying, if you've got, if you put a pad in and you have a rent on it, you know, you're not gonna do a loss leader thing where you get somebody on there and you jack them up 20, 30% a year or something. I'm more interested in rent stabilization rather than rent control, something more practical personally. But anyway, I just, I, and my last comment is, please, this is a pilot program that we're learning from. I, I made the comment at the last meeting, let's not, you know, in the, in reaching for perfect defeat the good. I, I just, I think this is opening up choice for ADUs and we ought to take it in that spirit.
What would, what would stop somebody from making the pad a dollar a year? And then they can charge whatever they want for the rent because we can't control it. I don't understand why, I mean.
Yeah, you're renting, if you're renting the pad.
And to be clear, renting the pad, if, if the, the contract includes the unit and the person has, lives into it, whether they're, then that is all one. We can't regulate it. You can't split the unit in the pad, they're not gonna get two bills. You rent it to them as a package. So there's two states of the world, the person rents the unit and the, and thus that, that rental right includes the right to have the lease of the land and that we can't regulate if it's built as all of these will be after February 1st, 1995. And to Councilmember Wire, that includes both rent control and rent stabilization.
You're just renting the pad.
But if you're renting, if you just rent the pad, you gotta bring your own tiny home.
Correct. Are people that are ready to do that?
I, I agree, but I don't, I don't believe, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe the data is, I don't have great data, maybe I'm missing something here, but those aren't the people we're trying to target for this. Those aren't the extremely low income people.
I, I understand that.
If they can spend a hundred grand on a tiny home, I mean, if they get one for free, maybe it's something.
That's what I'm trying to say is, we're trying to expand the number of checkmarks we get here at the risk of losing the entire program to try it.
Randy?
So this is, again.
Opening up choice for ADUs.
Yeah, well, it was an alternate that way, but it's also, again, these are all the concerns that the community has also is. I don't think there's any way that we could guarantee any pricing on any of this because there's so many variables. That's one thing. The second thing is, I haven't seen a ton of community members, community members, people that live here, come to council and ask for these. Now, I've seen a number of people that live outside of the city, even from, you know, further up Northern California, even out of state, that would love to live in Ojai and would love to have the opportunity of bringing their tiny home into Ojai. So I, I understand that side of it too. I'm just, you know, part of me wants to go along with this and then the other part of me says, you know, there's some quality of life issues, there's some real, real concerns about affordability and are they? And, and is this the route to go? So, you know, I've asked, I go back and forth on this. I guess another question I wanted to ask staff, and we can keep the discussion going, is can we limit the number of tiny homes on a street? Because one of the quality of life issues that have been brought to my attention is, what if I, if, if I had a tiny home on each side of me? That may not affect the person who's actually, who wants a tiny home on that site, but it, but if I don't want it, it sure impacts me. So how do we address that so that we limit to a degree the locations of these if, if this trial effort goes through? But I think that that's a component that we need to address.
Do you wanna answer that?
Short answer, yes, the city could impose a concentration or amount limits, yes.
But is, what, it's, if it's the same as an accessory dwelling unit, first of all, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. But secondly, can the city then have that same standard for any accessory dwelling unit?
Unfortunately, no, because regular ADUs, that is, that are built, stick built as part of the house or next to the house, are protected by state law from any kind of concentration limit. It's only because tiny houses are something well beyond what state law.
Now, I wanna say what I was gonna say. I, I could be wrong, but my, what I've seen from people living in actual tiny houses, most of them will probably be built by the, by the owner of the property because you have to put a deck around it, you have to make it really nice, it has to look like a house. I think there's gonna be very few people bringing in, a tiny, you know, tiny houses come in a wide price range from as little as 20,000 to, and the prices are, are changing because the, the way they're being built is changing. But I can't imagine that not passing this because of concern about the pad cost will have that much impact one way or the other. I think what Councilmember Wire said about the rent stabilization is far more important and that would apply to all ADUs. You know, we need rent stabilization for, for, yeah, well, to as much as we can legally do it. I, I'm really puzzled about trying to imagine, you know, that, that, it's gonna, there's gonna be very few instances, I think, when the, when someone is bringing in a tiny home, you know? And, and if, and if they bring in one that actually looks like a house and, and the owner builds a deck, I don't think the cost of the pad is gonna be an issue. I, I just don't, I don't see it.
So, Mayor?
Not yet, anyway.
I was just, I, so I, I think we all agree, I, I think in that case though, that tiny home, we can't control how much they rent it out for.
Well, the tiny home itself is gonna belong to the person. There's two, there's two distinct scenarios, as others have pointed out. There's the, probably the most common scenario is where the owner of the property puts up the tiny home, most likely for a family member or for themselves so they can rent out the larger house, that kind, or a friend. It's gonna be likely someone that they already know, not a, not a stranger. And then there's the scenario that I think Mayor Betsy has in mind, where somebody brings in the tiny home from the outside and doesn't wanna be charged an arm and a leg for the pad. Is that correct?
And more specific, yes. And also that staff looks at ways where we could actually make this for very low and extremely low income households, you know? So that's what I would like to see. And, and, you know, we don't know the answer right now, it's a question.
We can assess it further if that's the council's direction.
Randy?
So again, this goes back to what I said earlier about this ADU status. So Matt, maybe you need to answer this question. If we've given these, this ADU status and, and you're saying that we can't put any type of rent control on an ADU? Is that what I heard? But now you're saying we can put a rent control on a tiny home? So are they an ADU or are they a tiny home? And that's the argument that we've been arguing about for years now. What is it? And how do we now exempt some, again, this is that gray box we've created. Well, this side of it, you get all of these things and over here, eh, we don't care about those things, but we.
So they don't fit into a single category all the way up, up and down the train? The current proposal is that they're treated as ADUs, but by, which means that by state law, we can't, we can't regulate the rental or stabilize the rent of the unit because they're all built after 95. But the pad is different because the pad, and that's where they're, they're just not like ADUs because the land and the, the land of the unit can be separated.
So, so we have the right to declare anything an ADU? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Any new construction?
No.
Anything, anything that we determine as an ADU standard, we can throw it at it? Because what if someone sues us over the fact that, well, you declared this as an ADU, yet you've created all these exemptions? For instance, this wood deck that we're requiring to put around these ADUs that aren't built to our fire standards because they're exempt.
So that's a choice that comes with the name.
That's, that's, this is, there's just so much gray in this. There's, there's so many unanswered questions.
The reality is, what it is, is it's an opportunity, if you wanna put in a less expensive ADU that is similar to an ADU, but it's not the same. It's mobile, we have to follow the requirements, it can be a lot less expensive than an ADU, but we still can't rent control it. We can maybe rent control the pad, but if they don't bring their own one in, which is highly unlikely that they're gonna do and be in the class that we're trying to put this housing available for, that we can't control what they're gonna rent it out for. Now, if you wanna put your son in the backyard and do it, you don't have to charge any rent. You don't have to charge any rent at all if you don't want to. We can't control that you have to charge rent, we can't control that you don't charge any rent. But the pad itself is not gonna get us any type of rent stabilization or rent control on a consistent basis for the very low income individuals unless they somehow got a free or they were able to procure a tiny home and then they're looking for a pad to put it on that's less expensive. And that, that's the, the legal framework that's so difficult for what we're trying to do. I'm not against this as a pilot project, I'm not against the idea, but trying to formulate a way that we think we can control what these are gonna cost and trying to make sure they're designed for very low income individuals, I don't think we have the ability to do that. That doesn't mean that the market won't dictate that, that doesn't mean the owner can't rent them out for very low income people. That's, but that's a personal choice, not a government choice.
And, and there are people, I believe, that wanna make that personal choice. They have friends that they don't feel they wanna rent a room to because people like their privacy, but they would be more inclined to do something like that, if they can afford to do it. And also, let's remember that the more choices we, that people have, the more options that are for rent, that in itself helps to lower, the, can help to lower the price of the rent. And as far as fire hazards, let me tell you something, there are older homes, I'm living next to an extreme fire hazard that the city would not let me take down. It's a garage that's gonna go up any day now, okay? And that's, and I see that, there's stuff like that old housing all over town, that's a, that's a fire trap. So, you know, that's something else that we need to address. The, that, I don't, I do not see tiny houses that are built to, up to standard as any kind of a fire hazard. You know, they can be built of the right kind of materials and we can, we can, we can have that criteria, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to just get back to one point that I think was very valid raised by Councilperson Haney, and that's the density issue. And my understanding is, in, in terms of some guidance on how that might work, because I think it is a valid point, you don't want them clustered. Isn't our current notification requirement, if you're doing any kind of discretionary work in residential areas, something like 300 feet or is it 500 feet? 500 feet? So I, I'm wondering, we know we're a pretty small town. I'm wondering if it would be possible to include, let's say, a, whether it'd be practical to include, let's say, a, a 500 radius, 500 foot radius requirement? That you can't have more than one in any given 500 foot radius? Would that work?
I think Mayor Sticks' proposal was talking about doing a village. So you would eliminate the idea of a village altogether.
Well, a village isn't allowed because it's an ADU. This is all under an ADU framework and that's, that is self-limiting in terms of.
I don't know if the density requirements of an ADU would be applied to this particular one. It's one, well, it's, I don't know. I mean, we may have an option to be able to modify that, but.
I understand that, but I was thinking, no, that we did, the whole idea is to bring this as a choice with which to express our current ADU ordinance. And I think the, but I understand Councilman Haney's concern that we, we could impose a, a radius limit so that they're not, you know, all in a row on one street, for example. That's all I'm proposing.
I understand. The limitation at 10 per year, I would think would take care of that, but then.
Well, they could have five on one street, technically. So I'm just wondering whether that would be a practical way of addressing that concern of a 500 foot radius? I'm just asking whether that would be something that could be handled.
It could be done, yeah, that'd be within the council's power to impose. It obviously creates a first mover advantage and that's okay.
Yeah, that's possible. One quick thing, just to point out, I, if, if we do wanna include that in a motion, if I'm not wrong, Mr. Summers, I think 500 feet is for conditional use permits that have to do with alcohol and 300 feet for other conditional use permits is the notice distance. But if I'm wrong, correct me, I thought it was 300 feet and then the exception was, unless it's 500 and 1,000 or I'm wrong, but I thought it was three and five.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Well, I just wanna make sure it's consistent with the normal system, notice distance and if I'm wrong.
I was thinking three or 500 as a way of expressing or addressing this concern, which I think is a valid one. I, I would agree, you don't wanna inadvertently, all of a sudden have five of them all pop up, you know, right next to each other in the same street. That would not be in the spirit of what we're proposing, I don't think.
So, so I, you know, again, I brought that up because it was a concern that was brought to my attention. The, the downside to 500 feet is I have a sense that these future ADUs will more than likely go into a larger parcel size. So, you know, I was just doing the math, my lot's 80 by 80. So that means every fifth home could have one of these tiny homes on my street, so.
I'm just trying to come up with something that makes sense.
I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying that's, it's a good idea. So I, I've, I'm thinking right now that we have presented to staff probably five more legitimate questions that need to come back to council. And maybe at this point, we might wanna make that recommendation that we table this discussion, that we send these questions back to staff, let them come back at the next council meeting with answers to these and that we revisit this or continue this.
My, thank you, Randy. I do have a motion that would pertain to that. So I move to reconsider this item at a future regularly scheduled city council meeting and direct staff to thoroughly explore all options to make all tiny home pads available to low and very low income households because this group is the most underserved in our community.
And less owner occupied?
Pardon me?
Does that include owner occupied?
Well, I'd like staff to look into that, but that doesn't seem to make any sense because, you know, if your kid, your family lives there, it's different.
Well, we, and Mayor, just to, just to add, to amend yours, we also had the number of tiny homes per street.
The density and the fire code issue.
Yeah, the density and the fire code.
So assuming that's.
I, I think those are legitimate concerns and I, and I think they deserve more time to be looked at and to be brought back.
My thinking was that this is what the pilot program was about. So I don't know that we can resolve every possible scenario, but if the council majority wants to bring it back, so be it. I, I'm ready to solve whatever we can solve tonight and, and move forward. Because some of the issues that were brought up, I think the city manager and city attorney could provide answers for. Am I wrong? Where are you with this, Bill?
Where am I?
Yeah.
I wanna do, I would, my preference is a simple amendment, get a pilot program and try it out, but, you know, that's my position.
That, I, I would be in support of that.
You know, that doesn't seem to be where the majority is, so we'll see what motion gets on, I think the mayor's made a motion.
And then I'm gonna second the motion with my amendments if you agree with them.
Yeah.
Roll.
I'm uncomfortable with it, but I'll, you know, I'll vote accordingly.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need specific, what's the amendment? The distance requirement?
Was the fire?
I think. Fire hardening standards and the density concentration limits. And options.
And affordability options.
And then the underlying affordability options.
I think we were just talking, I think to dig into those, we would estimate it would probably be at, not at this next meeting, but the following meeting.
All right, roll call, please, Gil.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wirek?
No.
Councilmember. Councilmember Francina.
There's no easy answer, is there? I'll go ahead because I, but with the understanding that it's brought back in two meetings. And hopefully we can move forward at that point. All right, I'll go ahead. And a reluctant yes, very reluctant.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, moving on to number three, the status update of the Ventura River Water Adjudication.
Not sure where I have to go tonight, but I know I can't be here. So I'm accusing myself as an attorney representing parties in the case.
You could go to the green room.
Yeah, the green room's really.
So this item is on the agenda as just a, a status update. I think, um, uh, the Ventura River Watershed Adjudication was a, a major issue in the valley. And then when COVID hit, uh, the litigation has definitely slowed. And I think it's, we've kind of, you know, uh, it hasn't been on the top of people's minds. So we wanted to take an opportunity to kind of provide a status update and let the community know, um, uh, where this is at. The staff report gives a, a timeline and kind of a history of how, uh, the litigation started, uh, in a nutshell, uh, in response to a lawsuit from the channel keepers. The city of Ventura, uh, named hundreds of property owners within the valley, including the city, uh, in a third amended cross complaint. Uh, and so people may recall right as, right before COVID in, in, uh, late January, early February, there were public meetings and workshops held to explain, uh, held by the city of Ventura to explain the litigation. Since that time, the city has continued to, uh, actively be involved in, uh, in the, the process, uh, advocating for the Ojai Valley and, um, and having, uh, uh, attorneys represent, uh, the city of Ojai at these hearings. On, um, some of the recent, uh, kind of, uh, accomplishments is on September 8th, 2020, uh, at the request of the city of Ojai, the city of Ventura agreed not to seek attorneys' fees or costs against individuals or businesses that were named or noticed in the case. The city more recently also advocated for and obtained a Phase One hearing, which will take place on February 14th, 2022. And that hearing will determine whether Ventura has the legal authority to adjudicate groundwater, the, the groundwater rights of the four separate groundwater basins in, in this single lawsuit. Uh, so, uh, that's another, um, uh, item that was, uh, that was, uh, scheduled because of the, um, advocacy of the city of Ojai. Uh, and then, um, since that was scheduled February 14th, the city's also been actively participating in ongoing status conferences and recently successfully demanded that the city of Ventura be required to disclose their expert witness and their reports, so that, uh, others would be able to, uh, review those and determine whether to hire their own experts to prepare for that Phase One hearing. The court determined that the city of Ventura must serve their expert disclosures by August 31st, next Tuesday. Other key parties, including the city of Ojai, must serve their expert disclosures by September 24th. So that, those two items will be the next steps in the process. And so, uh, we just, you know, we wanted to give kind of an overview of where this is at, what the next couple steps are. Those expert disclosures are working towards the February 14th, 2022 Phase One hearing. Uh, and, and, um, uh, did you have anything, Ben? I'll let the city attorney add a couple comments.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Vega. A couple additional points. The, some of the parties in the case have developed a proposed physical solution settlement, notably City of Ventura, the Ventura River Water District, the Miners Oaks Water District, Taylor Ranch, Rancher Matilaham Mutual Water Company, uh, and a couple of others. And, uh, that proposed physical solution is available on the Ventura River Watershed Adjudication website. Uh, and the link for that is in the staff report available on the city's website. And, um, the proposed physical solution is intended to create a plan and funding mechanism to manage the watershed and pay for physical improvements that are designed to improve the fishery situation and the watershed, uh, ecology in the Ventura River and the related groundwater basins and to manage water usage through a separate new, uh, court-created, court-overseen, court-managed, uh, water master that would have representation for Casitas, for the water districts and for the agricultural interests, but not the city of Ojai. To date, the Casitas Municipal Water District, the city's water provider for most of the city of Ojai, has not indicated support for that settlement, citing publicly concerns regarding cost allocation and governance structure. The city of Ojai has taken no formal position, but, uh, the council has previously stated that it shares some of those concerns. Uh, discussions there are ongoing. Residents who are interested in this, in the issue further, uh, should take a look at the pleadings that are available on the Ventura River WatershedAdjudication.com website uh, and should consider encouraging, um, if they live in Casitas, uh, Casitas to take a role in litigation, along with encouraging if they have voters in Ventura or friends in Ventura, Ventura to take advantage of its options to limit the impact of litigation that it has not taken advantage of so far. Further comments I'll ask for staff and council.
Questions for staff?
Do we have any public?
Oh, yeah, any public comment on this, Gail?
No public comments, none, none on Zoom.
This is Fireland, Chief.
I, I have a comment I'd like to make on it, if that's, if that's all right, Mayor. I, I think one of the problems that the physical solution has promulgated, uh, uh, initially is there subtle aspects of connectivity, um, assumptions, both directly and indirectly through the cost allocation, which may not really exist, given, uh, the actual hydrology relationship between our primary water supply, which is underneath us in the Ojai Aquifer and the stream flow in the, uh, in the Ventura River, which is the basis of the, uh, claims by the city of Ventura. So one of the subtle issues here is that, uh, uh, simply accepting the physical solution is accepting a, some, an aspect of connectivity, which I think actually scientifically or hydrologically does not exist. And I, I think that that's one of the ways that we have to really, uh, think through this. And, and I also want to just, again, for the record, state my opinion that, given that our primary water supply is the Ojai Aquifer, that, uh, the city definitely has a vital interest in having, uh, the accurate, uh, hydrological assessment and cost, and cost allocation reflecting that embedded in whatever happens out of this adjudication. And then state again that the reason we're here for adjudication is because the city of Ventura did not want to accept water it was getting through the Casitas Municipal Water District, wanted more. And that's why we're at, that's why we're at where we're at.
And all just out of my head, the connectivity question is one of the issues and really the primary issue in this Phase One trial currently set for February 14th, 2022.
And I, I think we did a, a, the community a real service in raising that point of view, uh, with the court, and it had some traction.
Mayor, just briefly, it's, to me, this is, this whole fight is about survival. And it seems like one city is, um, is taking, um, the survival of their entire community, uh, for granted. So, um, this is the city of Ventura putting their interests ahead of the community. And that's, that's the sad part of it. And that's the political side of it. The adjudication and, and the, uh, the hydrology and, and, uh, how water flows from uphill downhill. I mean, to everyone here and, uh, all of us in the community, we all understand that. This is just plain and simple, um, a community, the city of Ventura, that wants more than their share so that they can continue to grow and they can continue to maintain the infrastructure that they have in place. And probably more importantly is the, um, someone brought this up the other day that, again, every day you learn something new, but, you know, um, they have, um, millions and millions of dollars, um, due in their, um, employment benefit funds that they can't afford right now. So they're, they're looking at any way they can possibly save. And if that means taking our water so that they can do more developments or that they can do more growth and more, or whatever they want to do, those are the, that's one of the bottom, that's one of the unknown things that we don't talk about, and that's the unfunded obligations that that community has. And they're huge. That's why they need more. That's why they need to continue to build. They need more. And, um, and that's what this fight is about. It, it, it's sick that they've spent $7 million to date. Just think if they would have turned that $7 million into infrastructure and into their, um, water, um, their water, um, recycling program. I, I, I mean, it's just, it, this is such a wasted lawsuit. And it, and it's, um, and the public knows that. Um, and maybe the public needs and we need to do a better job of communicating that to the city of Ventura. And I think that's one of the, that's one of the roles that we play.
Thank you, Randy. Any, anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to number four, the draft for the Ojai wildfire resiliency plan. So, uh, yeah, come on back. So this is coming back from the last meeting and, um, some council members had questions. So Bob Roper answered them in the staff report and, um, anything to add, James?
I, I don't think so. I think that summarizes it. So, uh, we're available to answer any questions.
And as far as I know, Bob Roper's online.
Yes, I was, this is Gail. I was just about to, to say that, um, Bob Roper is available for any questions if you, uh, have them. And I can bring him into the meeting if you'd like.
Thanks, Gail.
I don't have any questions. I don't, yeah, I have comments. I don't have any questions for Mr. Roper.
Yeah, I have some comments.
Okay, any, um, public, public comments on this, Gail?
No public comments other than Bob Roper. No one in Zoom.
Yeah, I, you know, upon reflection, as, um, I read through this again and listened to council comments, thought about the issues that we've been thinking about for a long time on this matter. I think one of the issues with the, that we need to define as a council is whether we want a, uh, a wildfire, a wildfire, uh, resiliency plan to be limited to what can be done just in the, uh, Ojai city limits? Or whether we're looking at, uh, trying to, uh, leverage our status as the only municipality in the Ojai area of interest for what needs to be done overall? Uh, I'll give one example. It's come to my attention recently that we really don't have a clear, uh, responsibility for maintaining fire breaks around the valley, completely outside the city limits. And yet, it's important, uh, in terms of preventing, um, uh, fires from developing a fire ecology for the entire valley that those kinds of things be maintained. I brought up the hydrants issue. Again, you want something that is, uh, uh, Ojai area of interest or valley wide, yeah, to be in place to both help with insurability and to try to reduce the susceptibility to wildfires in terms of fire ecology. Uh, vegetation management. Raised up several issues on that. So I think this whole plan is our focus just on the city limits, which is very limited in what we can do if the fire ecology outside the city limits is particularly rendered as particularly susceptible. Or do we, or do we want to think about, uh, how we can try to, uh, leverage a, a, a plan or advocate for a plan that would be adopted by not just the city's jurisdiction, by the county and the Ventura County Fire Department as well? And a fourth point I want to make along those lines is the areas, of the areas of refuge. You know, are we looking at, uh, the worst case scenario where people can't get out? And how we handle them? Are, are we gonna have any sort of, um, premise or expectation that we're gonna be able to evacuate? In my opinion, uh, evacuation only without sufficient area of refuge capacity, um, is, is itself a recipe for great risk. So I guess I'm, I'm just trying to see, this focus is very good in terms of city of Ojai. And I'm just wondering whether or not we want to, um, think about, uh, whether we should be looking at a plan that is, um, our recommendation as a city for the entire fire ecology that we're embedded with, within the Ojai, the greater Ojai Valley. And I just, I want to raise that as an overall issue.
Bob, can you respond to that? Gail, can you find Bob?
Um, he, there he is. Bob, we can hear you if you want to go ahead and speak.
Okay. I, I heard the comments and, uh, the councilman is absolutely correct is that the wildfire problem is much larger than the city. All, what I did is offer you what you, only what you have direct control over for action. I truly agree that anything else that deals with the valley wide is a much larger discussion that does need to be addressed with the county as a whole. Uh, and which includes the fire department, the sheriff's department and so forth, because the fire doesn't respect jurisdictional lines and nor should a plan. But what the city can do is what's offered and what's before you tonight. But I, I fully support that it, this does need to go beyond the city limits and include the valley.
Randy, and then we do have one public comment.
Can you take that?
Okay, uh, Michael Light, please.
Hi, um, yes, I want to, uh, agree with Bob and another city council member, um, tonight. I think it's an excellent idea that the city leveraged their, um, let's see, um, well, I can't remember, um, the word. But, uh, like, like Bob just said, fire, uh, starts over there and then comes here. And while we are surrounded by wildland that's not within city limits, if the city will continue to take specific actions, such as continuing to fund the, uh, Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, which, uh, can themselves execute a lot of the items in the wildfire resiliency plan. I believe the plan calls for an, an entity to kind of rein in all of the, um, action items and delegate or execute them. And I think that, um, it was an excellent decision of the council to fund the, uh, Fire Safe Council this season and, and any other, um, plans or, or reports that will benefit the city of Ojai but may take place or, or involve other, uh, entities around the city that don't necessarily fall within our limits. We, we are all working together here. And obviously this is a very, very, um, important issue. And it's getting late, so, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Fitz.
Uh, Randy?
So, um, you know, there's, there's, um, two concerns here. And, um, Mr. Roper's led us onto the discussion that is the first one, which is in-house. And Mr. Councilman Wyrick has brought up, um, the outhouse. I like that one, huh?
I like that.
But, but the interesting thing is, I would call them short term, long term. Because the short term is what we're here as a council and has to deal with, what we can, we immediately deal with internally. And the long term is, um, the bureaucratic dance that we would have to perform to get the county and all those other entities to join us in this dance of saving our community. So one's a real long term and one's a real short term. Um, I think tonight I'd like to, um, focus more on the short term. And, and my, uh, some of my comments to the short term are, um, we talked about, um, taking this plan and implementing it, yet we don't really have a person to implement it. My thought would be for any plan that works in a community like ours has to start from the bottom up. It can't come from the top down. It can't, it, I, I think it has to be. It can't, it, I, I think it has to be volunteer-based. Um, it can't, you know, and, and unless it has to be paid for. But I would think that someone who's volunteering to lead the charge on creating this plan for the community along these guidelines that, uh, you guys have put together, um, I think that, to me, that's the first step, is finding those individuals that want to come together and do this. So one of the suggestions I'd like to make tonight is maybe each council member, um, make some recommendations as to some people that might be good at that. And, um, because, um, Mayor Styx and, and Councilman Wyrick have been on this council, maybe you go through the interview process with these candidates and pick a leader, and through that process, we will have gathered probably, if each of us turn in two or three or four, 15 or 20 people in the community that we feel would be really exceptional to help be this volunteer group, um, and then let that leader choose between those folks and create his team, or her team. Um, but I think we need to start from that. I, I, I don't know if a paid position is what we want. I think we need this community to come together and recognize that with, without them being involved, nothing's gonna happen. We did the same thing four years ago. We drafted the same report four years ago, and here we are back four years later, and we haven't implemented a thing. Uh, well, I'm not gonna say that. There are some things that we have done, um, but not created the, the, the things that really would make us resilient. The other thing I think we're lacking, um, and I think Councilman Wyrick touched on this, is, um, we always talk about the exodus out of the valley in the event of a fire or a catastrophic event, when the reality is, um, staying in a safe place might be more beneficial for us. In the past, we've all gone to Nordoff High School. Uh, that was probably one of my bigger arguments with the ATP, was the fact that that's our safe zone. The reality is, if we looked at this community and we looked at the open space, we've got Soul Park, we've got the golf course, we've got all of the public schools, um, yet we haven't seen any invitations sent to, um, Ojai Unified School District regarding being a part of this solution. Um, I have a sense that with, with their monies, they could buy a, um, a forty, an eight-by-forty utility shed and just put it on every, every, uh, school site, and the city could figure out how to fund it with blankets, um, water, and all the things that are necessary for the community to have in the event of a catastrophic event. We keep talking fire because fire is the closest thing that's hurt us. The reality in California, earthquakes are probably more devastating, and probably greater to happen. Um, you know, that's either or. But that's my sense here. We've got a, we've got a, a good foundation here, we've got some great recommendations, but we need a leader, or leaders, and I think it has to come from the community. Because if we're gonna lead it, it's gonna get caught up in the bureaucratic thing that happens with everything that we do. Um, if it's a volunteer-based group, they can move at will, um, you know, they can, um, report back to council as needed, but pretty much, they can run with this, so, that's where, that's where I'm at right now, is I think this, I think these recommendations are great, I think there's more that could come from it, I think that we need to include more open space in the discussion, um, and I think we need to involve the school board, because they're a big part of our internal environment. So, I'll let someone else speak.
Wait, I have a question? Yeah, we just got a public comment from, I'm not sure what, it's Poochie? Doogie?
Doogie!
Oh, okay, I know you, Doogie.
Hello, my name is Doogie, as you might know. Hello, Bob.
Hello, Doogie.
You know me.
I do.
Okay, did you want to talk to them about Red Cross, or you want me to?
You.
Say again? Bob, did you want to talk about Red Cross, or you want me?
Go ahead, Doogie.
Okay. Uh, Red Cross, as much you know, or not, cannot actually mobilize ourselves. We come from the fire department, they make the decision. Another person here that ran Red Cross that time was Dale. Now, what we do is, we have it set up for Red Cross. We do have certs, ham radio, and Red Cross. We call ourselves Triads, as probably the sheriff knows. The thing is, is that when we, or things come down, volunteer, we get the call. Nordoff is our main place to go, but we can go to any other place that is noted, as was said, Soul Park, the other schools, anywhere in the valley. The thing is, Bob is right, Randy's right, keep it out of the city. Thomas Fire hit the property of Ojai, came in and touched it, but it was put out very quick, but it still got into Ojai City. But getting onto Red Cross, they have the agenda and resources to do that. Water, food, and personnel to do that, that are trained in Ojai. Bob is part of that situation, too. Are you still on that committee, Bob?
No.
Okay. Did not know that. Anyway, that being said, we do have Red Cross here, and as for volunteers, there's things coming in and about that, there are going to be things coming for the volunteers to try and work with other organizations, Rotary, Optimists, Lions, the VFW, the American Legion, you got powers there. Even though the, uh, military guys, they can take orders, they can do radio, they can do things. You're lucky here being in, being in Ojai, because our ham radios are huge, over 285. We got more ham radios than anybody has communications, and that is good, that's all I have to say. But the thing is, yes, volunteers are super important. Without that, that's the backbone of the city, that is the holders. That's all I have to say. Any questions? Anybody have a question for me?
Uh, maybe I do.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, and, and the Mayor Styx, remember that, that day that we had the, that event in the park? It seemed like we already had all these volunteers. You know, the, you mentioned some of the organizations. I mean, we, it's not like we have to take untrained people, they're already tra, we can get more people, but we have, there must be someone already that could lead the charge and train other people.
There will be. The sheriffs were really great at that time during the Thomas Fire. They were doing taxi service, bringing people into Nordoff. Now, Nordoff had a problem, as well, because they had an atmosphere problem, because it was going out there, and the guys from Fresno, because we had a lot of organizations here from their fire departments, they came from Fresno all around the state. Their idea, if things got real bad at Nordoff, for the high school, they were gonna take us out in the baseball fields and circle us with their, with their trucks, and spray us with water, hypothermia instead, trying to protect the building. I thought that was really strange.
I never heard that before.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I had a few talks about with, uh, with them about that. Hypothermia would've been, yeah, rain, their trucks don't hold a lot. But on that, that said, uh, during that fire, the, the hospital had some, uh, three fire engine round, Nordoff had two fire engines around for protection. At that, late that night, they brought in more, but we had our circle of fire around us.
Yeah.
Does that answer, did I answer any, or you, Susan?
Uh, you, you said more than I asked for, thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Any other questions?
No, it's fine, it's good.
Okay, I'll get to pull and pull me off.
Thank you, Doogie, much appreciated. Uh, Bob, do you want to respond to any of Randy's comments?
You know, I think what the proposal for the council to consider tonight is, this is strictly just a roadmap. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I think if the council was to, um, agree, approve the roadmap, then, um, Mr. Vega, um, and the volunteers or group then can take that, follow it, develop the exact project, the exact cost, look at alternative methods and funding, and come back with specific projects one by one, but at least you're following the roadmap that you've given approval for.
Right, yeah, and I would agree with that, and just a reminder, Bob is the retired county chief and the head, the chair of the California Fire Safe Council, so, and Bob has so kindly, um, volunteered to help us implement once it passes, so, um, yeah, to speak to your question or comment, Randy, you know, yes, definitely, and, and, you know, I'd be happy to work with Bill or whomever to get some volunteers going.
Could I, uh, my, Mayor? Mr. Roper, I was wondering, I have one specific thing I was wondering about adding to the 13 points, and again, we're not committing to anything, it's a roadmap, as you say, uh, by, by doing this. Um, in other words, we're talking about hiring contractor that's evaluating, not committing to it, as I understand it, because I think there, that's a big issue as well. But in terms of, of, of a number 14, what would you think about something very simple in terms of, at least inside the city, adopt the, uh, standards for fire hydrants, um, maintenance and repair and testing, and, uh, possible water supply hardening measures that the city does have, maybe have some control over in terms of feeding those fire hydrants, maintaining pressure in them?
Oh, I, I can support that, and, and now we'll just show the city's, um, follow-through on past problems as you work with Casitas to get that work done. So I could support that, actually.
All right.
Well, Randy?
So.
Wait, that's my turn, isn't it? Okay. I just, before too much time goes by and I forget, I just wanted to respond to Randy's concern again about the ATP, and remind everyone that all four lanes will be open during emergency. I think that's very important, and the city manager can verify that. During an emergency, we can open up the lanes and have plenty of room for, um, either the fire trucks park, if they need to park there, correct? Or if, I mean, there's, there...
With, with the demonstration project, we've tested, uh, so that, to ensure that the fire trucks have access to use the, what is it, now, the bike lanes?
Yes.
So there'd be, uh, those two lanes would be available in an emergency.
So, so I just want to clarify also, uh, you don't have to defend yourself with the ATP.
But you brought it up.
You don't, you don't have to defend yourself.
I'm not.
We tried these fire trucks in a non-emergency situation. When the shit is hitting the fan around this community, and we're burning down, that's when you want to assess, so, is there access? And, and furthermore, we don't have a design on that highway yet, we're still in the process. So all I was alluding to is the fact, that high school, right now, is our central location, and the fact that we need to diversify from one location in this valley for the betterment of this community.
Thank you.
So, um, the thing I wanted to talk to Mayor was on, uh, so, we're gonna vote tonight on passing these 14. Well, so when we reach that point, that's what we're trying to do, is vote on these 14, the roadmap, but we don't have, we don't know who's driving us yet. So are we gonna take that back to staff and have staff make a recommendation, um, or what are we doing here with that aspect of it?
Well, James, you want to add?
Well, I'd just say, uh, uh, I'm always driving it, whether I like it or not, and so, uh, so to speak to that, uh, I'll be driving it for now, but as part of that, the next step would be coming back to council with a funding plan, with recommendations for which of these to fund, and, and in what ways to do that, so that would be part of the next steps.
And you're an amazing driver, James.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing that.
You are.
Well, are we ready for a motion? Yeah, um, I would move to direct staff to implement this plan.
I would, including 14, fire hydrant standards? Okay, thank you.
Including, uh, each council member suggesting, uh, uh, to the city manager, a group of individuals that they might think could have leaders.
Great.
From a volunteer basis.
Beautiful.
I, I just want to say, I'd rather not pass a crappy plan, and I think this is not a fully vetted, fully ready-to-rock-and-roll plan. Um, it's missing a number of things. Fire hydrants aren't as simple as just saying we're gonna enforce fire hydrants. This doesn't specifically in any of these first 13, or what would be 14, include some of the important things that I brought up last time. I appreciate that we're addressing some of those things that I mentioned last time, but this doesn't include Soul Park, this doesn't include what I call bug-in positions where we have traffic, this doesn't include anything about gas rationing, this doesn't include the litany of things that I personally experienced, that was the feedback we got from the community during the Thomas Fire, and it also is so focused on fire, it eliminates, I know, I know that one of the answers to one of the questions was that it works for other emergencies, but I do not think this is a plan that I want to see funding and have questions about. I think this plan needs to be much better developed, and, uh, I think there's a lot of things that are missing, so, um, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this until it's done right, and until it's done right, I don't, there's no point in trying to figure out how to fund it.
Uh, Bob, do you have any response to that?
No, I respect the councilman's opinion, and I'll follow the direction that you guys choose tonight.
Okay, well, we have a motion?
Well, I need some clarification. Um, I understand what Bob's role is, I don't know why we're deferring him to so much when this is council making this decision. That's the first thing, and then the second thing is, um, uh, I know that you two sit on the same council as him, and the city manager, am I correct? And I believe Chris Stanch, am I correct?
The disaster council.
So, um, he is speaking for all of you when he speaks?
No.
No.
Okay, so, um, I would like to preclude him from any more part of the discussion, close it, and then come back to the deliberation, um, before we vote on, on...
I'd like to add, too, that this, this does not add any coordination between us and the county, which is the most essential part for specifically dealing with the, I am on fire.
Three for three?
That's three for three. If you can't hear at home, that's the, uh, that's the bell tower again.
A little Ojai psychic thing here, Ryan.
Have I been talking for three hours already? Um, the, uh, the, the reality is that this doesn't include, I, I mean, I think we, I don't need, we don't need volunteers, we need a aggressive ad hoc either committee or group of council members, elected officials who are gonna coordinate with the county, or as a whole group as a council, and for, you know, force them to work with us to get the things that are done. We are the center of the donut, and if the donut's burning, it's not gonna matter what's happening in the center. And, and Soul Park, for example, are all county properties, and if we're not working with the county, and this doesn't include some coordinated effort to try and work with the county and get these issues done, it doesn't make sense to me, and, and that's why the, I'm not kidding, the first thing I did when I got on the council, uh, was asked to set up a meeting with OES and sit down and actually talk with them, and I think that's what we need a continuation of. I think writing down these things are great, but none of these things take care of what I see are the, you know, the most important, significant issues that we've gotta have in place, and, um, well, I've spoke with OES, uh, you know, the, the, the head of, um, about Soul Park, it's not included in any of their plans, it's a very concerning thing. He's like, oh, just call us, we'll open it up, but I haven't seen it written down. James knows it's on the, as I call it, the secret whiteboard in an emergency, where we have all the stuff we want to do, regardless of what anybody tells us, because we're gonna do whatever we gotta do in an emergency. If we're formalizing this, this does not go nearly that far, and, uh, the, the standards for, um, fire hydrants are included, they're already part of Casitas's program, so...
No, they're not adopted according to outside reference standards.
The AWA standards are, as far as I'm aware.
Not doing annual testing and marking.
No, no, they're not performing them, but the standards are already...
They're not, they're not adhering to the standards.
Holding them accountable for it is different than that, making sure they pass, but I, but I do want to make sure we do that.
Do what we can, at least within the city limits on that.
Right, well, we, we have a, I, I completely agree, and I think that's a really important part of it, and I know that in the past, other water purveyors in this, in the city, until we held them accountable for it, we didn't get anything. So I think that's an imperative part, but just asking them to adopt those standards is a lot different than actually, forcing them to actually perform those standards. I think that's an important decision.
I agree.
All right, um, Susan and Randy, yes?
That may, the intent was to try to get them to adhere to it.
Can't, you know, this is, we keep kicking everything down the road, it's like with the tiny houses. Why can't we add the essential things that if we agree with Ryan, what's missing, why can't we add that to your motion, and so that we can approve this?
Yeah, I would agree with that, and to quote Eisenhower, "Planning is essential and plans are useless," so we know that... plans are useless. So we know that we'll, we'll make a good plan and then it's gonna change, you know, especially in the world in which we live in today. So, and, and James-
Hey, when it's a good plan, I'll vote for it.
Yeah, but this is what you did last time. I'm gonna finish, I'm, I'm gonna finish you guys. Um, James, we, you are already implementing some of these, correct?
Yeah, I think seven of these we've been implementing, um, you know, and I can just briefly list a couple of the building code updates. The BAV is currently reviewing them and finishing that review on September 1st. Um, we've, uh, the disaster council had asked us to investigate the signboards and the city council had reviewed that back a couple of years ago. So we, we, we actually recently got a quote for those signboards. We've grown the EOC function, bought new, uh, software such as the My Ohi apps, our application, which we sent a notice out today, uh, and I'll bring that up today, too. Um, using Facebook and text messages as needed. Uh, we have, um, um, there was a couple more. We had the disaster council approve, uh, this plan and forward it to the council. We conducted the first emergency preparation day on May 27th. Um, and so those are the ones that we've, that are in progress. So, uh, there's several on here that aren't in progress yet. And so if we adopt these, we'd start working on those. But those are the, those are the ones we've, we've implemented.
Okay, thank you. And, and you're, and the plan is in six months, you plan to hire someone who will, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, uh, just as far as when we evaluate, you know, options for whether to hire a contractor, whether, whether to use internal staffing, I think the challenge that we've seen over the last 18 months, or actually, we always, it keeps expanding, 19 months or whatever it's been, uh, since COVID, is that we pared down staffing to survive the budget impacts of COVID. And now we're finally kind of coming back. So, uh, admittedly, the process on implementing these was slowed down by that. Um, but I think we've made good progress, all things considered. And so as we continue to staff back, one of the positions that the city council had approved right before COVID, uh, was the, um, events coordinator, or events and public information coordinator, coordinator, which would be a position that potentially would be responsible for both public workshops and then also for the emergency notifications, which are critical to this. So that would be one of our lead positions on these. So.
Okay, thank you. So we could get to work on the home hardening right away once the BAV approves it. And, and one sentence I heard recently, this was in a, an LA Times article, work from the home out, not from the forest in. So all of us need to take responsibility and start right at home now. Uh, Randy?
So, uh, I think, I, I agree with Councilman Blatz that, um, if we're voting on a plan, this is not a well-written, well, this is not a complete plan. So I'm trying to think of another word for plan that we're, that we could adopt tonight. Because I'm full, I, I want to move forward. And the thing that just scared me is I just heard someone say six months. Do you realize in six months where we're gonna be in this community regarding fire? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, six months. We need six days. We need six weeks. We need something faster. So, by saying that, I'm just, that's all I'm trying to say. So how, how do, what's a better word for plan? What's the Ohi's wildfire resiliency guidelines? It's not a plan now, it's guidelines? Is that a better word? Is that a better way to move this forward? Because whoever we put in charge of this is the one that's gonna adopt these and adopt all of the additional information that we provide them and that they gather. Then they'll come back with a plan. But right now, I, I think that sounds better. And I would, and I would go along with, with that. Bill?
Okay.
Ryan?
Yep.
I, I think, I think part of the problem is there should be an evacuation plan. There should be a where we go plan. There should be a communication plan. That this is, this is an, having an all encompassing disaster plan is missing that the fundamental elements of it are broken down into, into, into parts that we need to do better on. And that I feel like we learned better from the Thomas fire on. And that in each one of those areas, it's the framework for the start of a plan. But it doesn't have all of the elements fully out there. I mean, in the fire hardening, the fire hydrants, all the, there's prevention. There's evacuation. There's, I, I prefer to call it, there's, everybody knows what a bug out bag is nowadays, I assume. That's where you're, you know, you gotta leave in an emergency. But there's the bug in situation where you don't know if you have an evacuation route. You don't know the places you can go and you know you need to be safe. I think it needs to be tailored more to those elements than, than 14 or 13, or however many we're gonna end up with, just general principles, but different categorical areas. And I'd like to see how these correspond with the county. Because some of these things, you know, this isn't a plan, and, and Randy, you said this, you know, and, and there's a great scene in one of my favorite movies, um, Crimson Tide, and the, the chef in there is having a heart attack. And Gene Hackman declares a, that they're gonna do a, a missile test right then. And at the end, Denzel Washington asks, goes, why would you do a missile test when we had a medical emergency? And he said, because things don't happen when everything's going great. These types of things happen when everything's going wrong. And we need something that we know is buttoned up, that the staff can be looking at, that council members can be looking at, that when that moment occurs, the roles are, are clear, the, the delineations are clear. And functionally, we have elements we can tell the public about evacuation. We know we've done our prevention. We know we have now communication. And then we have, um, uh, you know, ongoing responsibilities that, that some are gonna have to be on the fly that are more art than science and can't be planned perfectly. Because in an emergency, obviously, you can't plan everything out that's gonna happen. That, that to me is the level of plan we need. And we need it to integrate directly with the county so that when that moment comes, because the notice doesn't come to the city, the notice comes to the outlying unincorporated areas first. And they're the ones who have to evacuate or deal with things. If not, then, then it's a valley wide disaster that happens instantaneously like a earthquake. And we have got to know. And I know one of the problems that happened in the council was that nobody understood their roles. This doesn't address as, as clear. I know it, it was a, a point in, in something I read, but it, it's not clear. Like, I can't read this and go, okay, there's a fire coming down. I know what my role is. I know what I can do. If I'm safe and I'm healthy, how can I be involved in helping this? I, I look at this and go, this wouldn't change a thing I did in the last fire. This wouldn't change anything I was certain the city was doing in the last fire. That, this, this wouldn't. Um, other than getting the prevention stuff taken care of. But we, we did the fire hydrant checkup a year and a half before the Thomas fire. I did it myself. I mean, I helped force it myself. We did, uh, the evacuation was a complete mess. Nobody knew where to go. Nobody, nobody knew. Uh, this doesn't address that there were 45 cars at Chevron trying to get gas to get out of town at the same time. That was the emergency. Where are these things we learned? And, and how do we break them up so we can talk about it and figure out how we're going to implement them? Whether it's through our own police force, whether it's through the fire department, whether it's through the county emergency response. And being able to tell them, these are the things we're requiring out of you when this happens. Um, I have no problem with this being a framework of an idea of a plan. And that's where it's at. But this isn't the plan. If this is the best plan we can come up with, I can't vote for it.
Well, that's why I moved to the word plan.
We can do that.
And then I even crossed out guideline and I put starting point. I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I crossed out, I put cross out plan first, then I went, well, guideline's not winning the day. So maybe we call it the starting point. Well, I think what we're all trying to say here, Ryan, is we're all in complete agreement with what you're saying. You made a lot of sense at the last council session when you brought this up the way you did. You're making just as much sense tonight. But we gotta move forward. And this is, this is a small step. It's not the step you're looking for.
I, I agree.
But it's a small step and, and we need to take it.
And one, one other thing I want to bring up, because I forgot this, the, the number of, of large animal movement, uh, trailers and other things that were blocking roads and were going other places. We need to make sure that the big parking lots are available for that. I, I don't, I, I don't know how that works. I don't have the, the information. But I know I saw trailers that were incredibly long, 40 feet long, that were blocking roads and they were trying to get gas and they're trying to get out of town. Is there a way that they can maintain a spot at, at Soul Park in the parking lot or another place? If that's not gonna work-
That's what's not being recognized by OES right now.
Right. Can we prioritize their exit of the valley? I mean, you know-
How do we start, Ryan?
I, I'm with you. I'm just saying that these are the other, I want to make sure I'm getting them on the record. So if these are the things we need to look at.
So how do we start? I mean, write what, all these things you're saying, write them down. Okay? I mean, we were, you know, I mean, write them down. Uh, submit them. I mean, get them in the mix.
I met with OES as soon as I got here and put them all on the list.
All right. So what do we want to name this tonight?
Do it again.
We do, excuse me, we have one more public comment. Are you all okay with that? Julia? Thank you.
So you guys keep on talking about someone to head up this plan, like a volunteer. And I was just wondering if you guys know about the Fire Save Council? If you're aware of that?
Very aware.
Do you know what they do? They do this stuff. Yeah. So I just, I just wanted to know if you had any comments about that.
They're in the mix.
Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you.
Okay. So how can we signal the first step without being fatally definitive and therefore self-limiting?
I think it's a-
We've suggested calling it not a plan, but guidelines, resiliency guidelines.
Or even the word guide.
It's a, it's a starting point. I'm not trying to, to degrade it into worthlessness.
Let's get to a word. What, what?
It's a framework for, it's a framework for the beginning of a plan of a, of a pure-
How about Ohi wildfire resiliency framework?
That's, that's fine. I mean, I'm, the semantics of it, don't, don't cheer me up at all. But, but I'm okay with that.
Wait a second. You're removing my word. No, framework. I, I'd go with framework. Let's, let's get it done. Framework.
I, my, my only point is that I don't want, I don't want us to get to a point where we're indicating that this is-
Not the end.
Near, near, even, even part.
This isn't near the end. It's not done.
That it's a final draft or even a preliminary draft.
Organizing a path to follow a lot more.
And I greatly appreciate that we've moved it this far. We, we're not at the goal line yet. But we got the ball. We're moving down the field and that's a really good thing. And I'm really glad we're bringing this up and-
We haven't fumbled it.
And we haven't fumbled it.
Contribute our specific ideas into the mix in writing.
I, I will, I will gladly reiterate every, I, I had a lengthy list when I met with OES. I'm happy to bring it up again.
Well, you're on tape. Second, second?
Well, no.
So we have a motion?
Right. Framework.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Uh, roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Yay. Okay, hike. Let's run with it.
Baby step. Agreed. Baby step.
All right, moving on.
All right, moving on to number five. It's the designation of voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference at the Sacramento Convention Center, September 22nd to 24th.
I nominate the mayor.
I second that.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah, that's your job. I've, I've done it.
When's the last time you were in Sacramento?
It's been a while.
It's not a bad flight from Santa Barbara.
You'll enjoy the convention.
It really is.
Okay, I'd love to. Thank you so much.
Moving on. Does this require a motion or, does this, does this require a motion or a vote?
It does. We need to vote, uh, because the mayor would be exercising the city's voting authority with the league.
And, and then is-
We want to set an alternate as well.
Oh, yeah. I, I nominate Suzie as the alternate.
No, that's the mayor Protem's job.
I'll make a motion.
Well, first of all, do we know yet if it requires going to Sacramento?
So at this time, we actually assumed they were gonna do virtual. So we called them and they have no plans to, to offer virtual at this time.
Who's this?
It's a moving target.
I have an excuse. I, I may have to move.
That was the most confusing answer.
But there's two alternates.
No virtual plans.
Okay, thank you.
I've already been to one of these. Now, some of y'all have not been to one.
Oh, I've been to my share.
You've been to your share? Brian, have you been to one?
I've been to the one in, uh, in, uh, Palm Springs, but I haven't been to this one. But unfortunately, these dates are not working.
Okay. Suzie, have you been to one of these?
Yes, back, way back in-
Oh, no, no, your new term. Not your old term.
Come on, guys.
Things have changed.
It was a two or three day event at that time. We stayed in a fancy hotel.
It's three days this time.
Three days.
Sounds to me like you're missing out on something.
I think you should go.
I'm looking at the dates.
I think the community would be well represented by you two women.
Yeah.
Did we fly there? We'll have fun.
You can drive together.
Don't worry. We'll have fun.
Horse and buggy is an option for environmental concern.
Final answer. I forget what's happening on this September 24th.
It's not, it's not-
Maybe in there for the swearing in of our new governor.
What?
You might, you might have, it'd be right after recall. So.
If I could offer a suggestion, the council could, could nominate or designate the mayor and Councilmember Francina as delegate and alternate without deciding tonight whether you go or not to the conference. That could be made-
We can have one alternate.
Two different decisions.
So, I'll second that, Matt.
Okay.
I agree.
May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
I did. Is that a-
I first, I, I, I'll say I first.
It'll be Ryan and I'll second it.
So this is, I don't, I'm not making a firm commitment, right? I have, I have two dogs. I gotta get a dog seat.
You and Mayor Stix can figure out who's gonna go.
Maybe I can help you with that. I'm across the fence.
I honestly would go. If I, if I didn't have a water hearing- I would.
Okay, did we get a second?
Okay.
Can we have a roll call, please? Okay, roll call, please, Gail?
So just to be clear, uh, the, the alternate is Councilmember Francina?
At this moment.
Okay, okay. So for the roll call, um, Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Didn't we already do this? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sacramento, here we come.
Clearly.
Okay, moving on. Number six, uh, last but not least, the coronavirus emergency response.
Yeah, and I, I do have a, a brief presentation with a couple of, um, slides. So good.
I'm freezing.
Uh, I'll, I'll skip the, I'll skip the slides. We'll, we'll do a, um, we'll just do it verbally. So, uh, uh, we wanted to, to make sure to continue to have these coronavirus updates, especially, I think, um, people are aware where we are in a, in the midst of a surge, uh, both locally and, and nationally. Uh, locally, uh, I think at the last meeting, we talked about going from only a couple of cases every 14 days to going up to 16 cases in 14 days at that time. Uh, the latest results show, uh, for the 93023 zip code, um, which includes Ohi but also, uh, additional, um, area in the valley, we are up to 39 cases in the past 14 days. So that, that, that number has increased pretty significantly, um, uh, since that time. It's not to the level that it, uh, was in January of 2021, but it's definitely, uh, an increase from the last couple of months. Uh, we talked, we've talked about the case rate not being the end all be all statistic. Um, talking to the county, talking to, uh, the public health department. Uh, two, two metrics that they look at closely are the hospitalization, number of hospitalizations and the number of, uh, people currently in the ICU. And so just to give an idea, uh, today, there are 147 people hospitalized in Ventura County due to COVID. That number was 70, uh, at the beginning of the month. So it's almost, it's doubled in, in about a month. It was 23 in July. It was nine in June, two in May. So you can see how, how low that number had gotten and how it's increased since then. However, it, uh, was 449 in January and in the 200s in both December and February. So we haven't gotten back to that level that, uh, of the surge from December to February. But the, um, it is definitely an increase from May, May, May and June of this year. Similarly, our ICU, uh, count at this time in the, in the county is 34. Uh, that was 18 at the beginning of the month. So it's almost doubled. It was six in July and two in June. So that's another case where the numbers had really gotten low and they've, they've started to come back up. Uh, again, at the highest point, though, uh, we're, uh, we were at 89 in January and in the, uh, 60s in December and February. So we're at 34 now. We're about half, half, or a little less than half what we were at those spikes. But, uh, obviously, none of us want to see that trend going up, which is what we're seeing right now. So, uh, so in light of that, I'm sure everybody's heard, and I mentioned earlier, we, we posted and we sent out through the My Ohi app today, uh, an update that the county of, uh, the county public health, uh, department has issued the new health order requiring masking indoors and indoor public places, which includes grocery stores, uh, workplaces, retail stores, restaurants and theaters. Included in that is the, uh, city of Ohi's facilities. So we've put, put, is the city of Ojai's facilities. So we've put, put copies of the mask required signage and we've made masks available at all our, our public facilities. But we also wanted to note that we, we've been making sure to go out and do education and outreach over the last couple of days. We've handed, we've had staff go business to business and have handed out 86 flyers to 86 businesses. It's interesting because I asked the, the staff that had gone out, you know, what the reaction is. And, you know, and I think right now everybody has seen that, you know, opinions on, on the masking, you know, are kind of varied. But the general reaction from the businesses has been that they appreciate the, the signage, but they actually ask for additional signage because they want to make sure to put, post it everywhere, you know, to kind of let everybody know, you know, that they're requiring those masks inside businesses. So it feels like at this point, we're getting a, a pretty positive reaction from businesses who don't, are, you know, who want to make sure that they're, they're following those requirements. So, so we're only on day two, I think, of the order. I think he announced, Dr. Levin announced it on Friday, but it actually went into effect like at midnight on, on, our 11:59 on, on Monday. So we haven't seen a whole lot of activity yet, but we're, we're sending staff out with those flyers. We're putting those flyer, putting back out the hand sanitizing stations, putting back out the signage that, that, that people may recall that is posted in various locations throughout the city. So, so that's kind of where we're at in the last few days. We also wanted to just announce, we've been having testing at Sarzati Park on Wednesdays and Fridays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We actually worked with the county and COVID clinic to get an additional day of testing. So starting, starting next Monday, August 30th, it will be testing Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays at Sarzati Park. We also were able to work with both of them. We've heard some of the concerns and, and some of the different issues. So we were able to work with both of them to, to get some increased staffing at the testing site. So that should hopefully help, both of those things should hopefully help cut down some of the long lines we were seeing. And just to give an idea of the usage of those testing sites, at one point during COVID, they were going to go down to one day because we had like six people show up on, on one of the Wednesdays. We are, we're, as last week, on Wednesday, we had 76 people show up for testing and on Wednesday, and 86 people show up for testing on Friday. So we're seeing that correlation of more and more people are showing up for testing. So hopefully the Mondays being added and the staffing increase will help keep those lines shorter and make it a smoother experience. And so if you are going to use the testing, one recommendation, and I learned this myself, when I went to get tested, is pre-register. They welcome walkups, but it's definitely an easier process if you pre-register at covidclinic.org. And you can go to actually covidclinic.org/sarzati park and that'll get you right to the, the location to sign up for our site. So with that, that's just kind of an, an update. We, I believe the mask order is in effect until September 19th. So at this time, you know, we expect the next month or so that that will be in place and we'll make sure to announce when anything changes. So.
James, questions?
Mayor, James, are the, we're required to wear a mask when we go indoors. Are the workers of all these establishments all supposed to be wearing masks?
Yes, they, under this requirement, they should be wearing masks.
I've, I've been to a couple of stores and that's not what I'm observing. The, the other aspect of it is, is do you have a sense that, you know, we were the first to mask in the county. And I think that that, that really was, was a big saving point for our community. And it seems like, it seems like we need to think about, about any other steps that we may want to take regarding requirements of people to be tested or requirements of people to actually have taken a shot, especially the new ones coming out. I'm not sure where the rest of you are on that. Like Bill and I, we disagree a lot on it, which is fine. That's, we're allowed to. But one of the things that saved us was being proactive and not waiting. And I just think it's important that, especially council and public figures lead. So I'm hoping that we all are. I'm hoping that we're all safe. And I'm thinking and I'm hoping that we're, we're preparing for this to get worse versus it to get less worse. So this is my comment.
Any other questions?
I had a question.
Yeah.
James, you and I have just, we had a little preliminary discussion on this. There's an evolution in testing going on. The, a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of countries are moving away from the PCR. I think even CDC is mentioning that they're going to be moving away from PCR and to the rapid antigen tests, which is more in some, at least, I, I, look, I don't know everything about it, but I read about it. And there's assertions that you have, it's, it's more indicative of actual symptomatic status than, than PCR can be, depending upon the number of cycles that are specified in the PCR. Is there any talk in the county or any thought in the city of whether they might want to supplement with the rapid antigen test, which actually would allow within a few minutes, everybody in a certain setting to be tested?
There hasn't been any talk on that, but we can follow up with both the county.
I just wondered about the feasibility and cost of rapid antigen testing.
We can follow up on that. I actually think COVID clinic does offer it, but we can follow up with, you know, figuring out if that's a chain. We can make that.
I'd be, I'd be for something like that.
That's how we all look into it.
I think anything that we can do to help this community event, I think the most important thing we need to remember is we have a lot of people that, outside of our community that come here. You know, we are, we're a tourist based economy. We have a lot of, we have, we, anything and everything that we can do, that's why I'm in agreement with you. Anything and everything that we can do to keep our community safe is, is what we need to look at. I agree with you 100%.
Literally, literally, you could have a, we're talking 10 to 15 minutes, I think.
Right.
So you could actually have it as part of the, the entry screening into a public event. So anyway.
Someone said they were doing that on cruise lines or trying to implement that on cruise lines so that you tested before you went on board.
And other countries are doing this more of a standard than the PCR, which has that long delay built into it. So anyway, just thought I'd bring it up.
Good idea. Good times.
Very research.
Any other questions? Okay. Any public, public comments on this item, Gail?
On item seven, no.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's seven. All right. Well, moving on to the council member reports.
Why does Suzie freezing? I don't know.
City manager's report?
Just two things quickly. One is that the county of Ventura has started their redistricting process. And they are going to have their first meeting on August 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And, and then they have a series of workshops, September 2nd, they'll have one, September 9th, September 11th, September 13th. So that's, I think, important for the community to know. And we encourage people to get involved, just like we'll encourage people to get involved when ours begins, which right now is scheduled for September 14th, or 14th or 18th, whichever the Tuesday is.
14th.
14th.
James, have we designated anyone from staff to actually attend?
So, yeah, I'm planning to attend the first one because there, there is a lot of questions about how Ojai will be impacted. So, so we'll attend that. And then, and then September 14th, we'll kick off ours as well.
James, can I just say it? I mean, there's, I, I've been contacted and heard from various people that the county, even though CEO Mike Powers denied it, that there is a indication that the county's considering moving District One significantly, moving out, Ojai potentially out of it and rearranging it to a significant change that would have potential significant political impacts on our community with the, on our area with the, with the county supervisors. So I just want to make sure that all the council members totally understand what's going on, understand what the implications could be. It may or may not be that that's a rumor, but I have it from a highly credible source who contacted me and wanted to make sure that our council is well aware of it, that our community was well aware of it, and that if necessary, we're mobilizing because there could be, not necessarily, we haven't confirmed what's going on, but there, there could be some interesting moves that are being made that could have some significant implications for us. And that these redistricting things don't happen very often. And when they do, there can be long-term effects that are significant for little towns like ours. So I just want to make sure it's on everybody's radar. And if anybody has any questions, follow up with James or feel free to let me, you know, give me a call. But this is one where we need all hands on deck. And if we find out quickly, we may need to get super involved as a community and as a council.
Yep. We are already considered the stepchildren of the county. No reason to be relegated to the stepchildren locked in the closet. We gotta, we gotta think through this one.
Yes. Thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Randy. Any future agenda items? Randy?
I would again like to bring back the council protocols, specifically how we agendize things. I still think that, I strongly believe that we need to set the agenda in council with a majority and that we remove this two council and one council aspect of throwing stuff on our agenda. I think that we would work better, work more smoothly, and I'll save my argument for that, that night. Do I need a, do I need a second?
I, I second that. I think it's worth reviewing.
Great.
I'd like to put back, talk about the start time because we did change the code to 6:30, changed the start time to 6:30. And then we went back because of the heat. So if we, you know, we did, since we changed it, it should be 6:30. But we, we voted to change the time.
Yeah, we, we updated the city code to say that the start time's 6:30. So I think, you know, we could go to, or council could go two ways with it. One is to decide to change the code back to seven or to keep the 6:30. Or even build some flexibility into the code.
That's an option. Yep. Oxnard and Ventura start six all year round.
That's why we're not there.
Absolutely. No, we'll talk about it the next.
Yeah, we were, I think the idea was to have an item where we, we determine what we want the start time to be moving forward.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Next drop, you guys.